All right. Good evening. Welcome to early work session of the Highland Village City Council. Today is Tuesday, December 13th. The meeting is called to order at 6:02. Let the record show all council members are present with the exception of Councilman Fierenza. Item number one on the agenda is receive a presentation and continue our discussion on golf carts, neighborhood electric vehicles, slow-moving vehicles, and electric bicycles and scooters on city streets and trails, including speed limits in Highland Village.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Get my humor there?
A little bit. I'm in a little bit of pain right now, so humor's not good.
Yeah.
Can't wait till the surgery. So we're going to go ahead and start this off by showing a video first, and then we'll go into the slideshow presentation. And this video is specific to Peachtree, Georgia. It's the town that, John, you had spoke of about getting some more information. I think other council members weren't supportive of that as well. But the mayor, she was there about three years ago, so this video is about three years old. But in speaking with staff, everything is still relevant in the video. So she does a good job explaining how the golf carts work in Peachtree, Georgia.
Some American cities have buses. Some use trams and trains, and there's one that uses golf carts.
My name is Vanessa Fleisch, and I am the mayor of Peachtree City, Georgia. It's a small city of about 35,000 people that is about 20 minutes south of Atlanta. Its asphalt paths, we have over 100 miles of them. They range from eight feet to 10 feet wide in some places. They're used for golf carts mostly. We have over 11,000 registered golf carts in the city. And obviously pedestrians, bicyclists, all kinds of traffic is on these paths. Morning.
And you do have to register them?
Yes, you do. The people in the city do register them.
There's someone else approaching us now. I'm assuming it's like regular roads. You pass on the right?
Correct.
Yeah. It's a parallel road network, basically.
The majority of the city is accessible by carts, and that's a huge attraction because parents can pick up their kids at school if they want to.
And some of the kids can drive themselves?
Yes. So the younger kids or the sophomores at the local high schools are allowed, with their learner's permit, to drive their carts to school.
Wow.
It's a bit of freedom that they enjoy.
And I guess if it's limited to 20 miles an hour, there's less of a chance of a bad bump. So this is the high school?
This is. There's parking at the high school for 615 carts.
That is a lot of golf carts. Do all the students leave at once here? Is it just a traffic jam of golf carts?
Oh, it is. It is a traffic jam of golf carts, and it's not always pretty.
Some of them have a limiter?
They do, but sometimes they can be removed and they go faster than they should, which isn't good.
No, that's exactly what I'd have done at age 15 with my own golf cart. I would have removed the limiter on it.
Some of the carts have heaters inside them and radios. You can soup them up as much as you want, really. After they saw the popularity in the '70s, what they did was they required, whenever there was a new subdivision of houses built, that they connect to the paths. For the most part, the cart paths are laid out at the same time they lay out the roads.
So what are the road rules here? It's not even a regular vehicle. You've just got more paths you can go on?
Yes. And there is no path you are allowed to be on the road. But that's why we've expanded the paths, because we're trying to keep people off of them as much as possible. Sometimes people who have never been here have been caught on cart paths with their cars, thinking that that's the right thing to do. I wanted to take you through a drive-through. So up here is McDonald's.
I'm still kind of getting over the fact that I'm in a drive-through in a golf cart.
Thank you.
Should point out, not sponsored, this is not product placement.
The brakes on this are very good. I'm sorry. It's very abrupt on them.
It's better than the alternative. Peachtree City was a planned community, right?
Correct.
So how did it go from, "We're going to build some houses here," to, "We're going to have something that I don't think any other city in America has"?
It got started originally as a lake kind of retreat for Atlanta residents. And the people who were here, basically only on the weekends, they started taking their golf carts on the roads, leaving, playing golf. This whole separate network came up as a result of that, to get them off the roads on their way home.
So this was founded in the 1950s?
1959 by Joel Cowan. He was a college student when he designed and founded this city.
Wow.
It's very quiet. See what I mean?
Death wish. Good grief.
Along here, this is Lake Peachtree.
Sorry, I got distracted by ducks.
Ducks, yes. The founder, Mr. Cowan, and his cousin were the ones that put up the dam and spillway originally that made this lake. 100,000 gallons a second goes over this. People do pay taxes to pay towards these roads. It costs us $1.8 million a year to maintain what we have, as well as the 29 bridges and 29 tunnels.
This is a pretty affluent city, which I guess is one of the reasons that the golf cart paths work. But there are a lot of cities like that in America, and I don't... I'm trying to work out why it's worked here and it hasn't elsewhere.
Most mayors, when they see or hear about us and they think, "Oh, we can do that." Well, you know, they've got older cities, right? So they really can't.
And yes, part of it is cost. Part of it is that you need a huge amount of upkeep and tax and everything to make this work.
Right.
But it's also because you need to set the whole thing up, or it doesn't work. You can't have a quarter of a cart network, because no one will buy a cart and no one will use it. You need to connect everything, or it's not worth it.
Right.
Lovely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You can find out more about Peachtree City in the links in the description.
I looked it up. There's 38,000 people in that town. They said there's 11,000 golf carts. It's like every household has a golf cart, yeah.
And I'm going to provide some more stats in the presentation. If I can get the clicker, the remote to work. And it's on ON, so I know that's right. Make sure the batteries are in there right first. Is it in there right? Okay, while we're trying to figure this out, Scott and Chief Reim and Jace and Chief Collier have all seen the presentation and have, and are prepared also to speak to the areas of expertise as we go through this. All right, so information, population is, as of 2021, 38,000. It's a suburb of Atlanta, Georgia, and the paths range from eight foot to 10 foot wide and up to 12-foot at bridges. 11,000 registered golf carts in the city, and the majority of the city is accessible by golf carts. Multi-use paths, that's what they are, 100-plus-mile network. It provides for pedestrians, roller skaters, skateboards, bladers, cyclists, and golf carts, as well as low, as slow-moving vehicle, am I saying that right, Doug? LS, okay. Not to exceed 20 miles per hour on any of these forms of mobility. So the connections are from the neighborhoods to the shopping centers, restaurants, schools, and parks. The trails map is quite extensive. All of those different colored lines on there are trail map, are trail accessibility areas. The highlights, they must register the cart within 10 days of purchasing the cart. Proof of ownership, photo ID, 12- to 15-year-olds accompanied with a legal guardian, 15 with a driver's permit, and 16 and older with a driver's license. Ride on, continued, they will ride on, they can ride on authorized streets, recreational paths, and those areas accessible by the public. No motorized vehicles on any street 35 miles an hour or greater. 20 miles per hour is the maximum speed limit on trails and streets. And they have, as of last year, they have a seasonal park enforcement staff that helps with education and enforcement of the policy. So the registration, the registration process is, the first year is $45, year two is $30, and then year three is $15. And there's a sample of the registration that the golf carts are to have. So the penalties are, and there's the offenses, 250 for the first, 500 for the second, and 1,000 for the third, and the registration is revoked. And there's a golf cart brochure, and this basically explains how golf carts are to be used on paths, and it gives all of the information that the ordinance supports. And it's about two pages long.
They don't require any insurance?
They recommend it. And the challenges in speaking with staff there are underage drivers, some accidents on the trail with carts and cyclists. And then education of trail usage for new drivers, they spoke specifically about that, as that being one of their biggest challenges to overcome. And specifically, golf carts yield to cars at intersections and not the other way around. Some vandalism in parks and on athletic fields and courts with burnouts and donuts from teenagers. And then youth in parks after hours. And that's kind of a, in the industry of parks and recreation, I'm going to kind of talk about that a little bit, is that youth, you know, the teenage group, they stay up later. And we just do a poor job in cities adjusting to that as parks and recreation professionals. And we all know that nationally, and we're trying to address that. You know, if we can turn that into positive activity, whether it's riding golf carts or other things, it's going to be a win-win for any city. So Highland Village Road, this is information that was provided. Does anyone want to come up, shut the slide in here and speak to this?
Is the end of yours?
Huh?
I put it at the end.
Is it at the end?
I put it at the end.
You got one more?
Yeah.
That's at the end?
Yeah. So I just wanted to throw this slide in here from our other presentation a couple weeks ago and just remind you that on Highland Village Road, our only 35 mile an hour road, that there are roughly 10,000 cars traveling on that daily, with the 85th percentile traveling northbound at 34 and the 85th percentile traveling southbound at 37. Because I know we were discussing lowering the speed limit on Highland Village Road to allow golf carts on it, so I just wanted to make you aware of that. Also, I wanted to make you aware that Highland Village Road at I-35 Express is getting the northbound access only. So that could be a card that we don't know to be played yet. Traffic-wise, going that way, right now, we would assume anybody wanting to go northbound 35 is taking Brazos Boulevard to Garden Ridge. Those vehicles could start taking Highland Village Road to 35, or they could be taking 407 to 35 as well. Those people could start taking Highland Village Road to 35. I just wanted to bring that out.
Question. You allow cyclists on Highland Village Road, right?
Cyclists are allowed on Highland Village Road.
And you allow motorcycles? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
What you're saying, though, about the other routes is we could see these numbers.
These numbers could change. It's a possibility. I just wanted to bring it out into the open.
Well, my point for asking that question is, I'm going to tell you, a golf cart going 20 miles an hour is much safer than a stupid cyclist going on Highland Village Road and bottling it up. And then the motorcycle guys going on Highland Village Road doing, you know, 35, 40 miles an hour. At least in a golf cart, you have four wheels. You have something around you. You're required to have seat belts, and you're required to have lights and a reflector, so.
Question. So we've got 6,000 going north. Do we know peak times? I mean, is that morning traffic that's real, real heavy?
Our morning, our morning traffic commuters is peak. The, it's actually two peaks, the morning commute and the...
And the evening?
Which is a higher spike than the come-home traffic.
So I'm seeing, for 6,000 cars going north, a lot of them are coming south, coming home. I mean, it could be that type of thing.
It's spread out, you know. They might, they might travel down 407 further, going home. And there's no telling. We haven't done, this is just our observation. If we wanted to get down to brass tacks, so to speak, it would be recommended to hire a traffic consultant firm to study Highland Village Road and get the turning movements and so on and so forth.
I mean, it just makes sense with that. I mean, I take my grandson and granddaughter to school every day. And, you know, I wait at Whittier in Highland Village Road. I mean, that's just traffic time. Afternoon, not so much. So, okay. Thanks. Okay, thank you, Scott. All right, so now it's time for questions. Do you have questions for us about Peachtree City?
So they don't require turn signals?
No, they don't require turn signals.
They require seat belts?
Mm-hmm.
They require a reflector?
I can't speak to that. I know they have seat belts, and I know they have lights. I don't know about the reflectors.
Well, I have no problem with us requiring all of those. But going back to Highland Village Road, I mean, I see no reason that, if you lower the speed limit, that golf carts shouldn't be allowed on Highland Village Road. If you're allowing motorcycles and you're allowing cyclists, and actually cyclists, in my opinion, and bicycles on Highland Village Road are way more dangerous to oncoming and opposite-going traffic than what golf carts could ever be. So that's my...
The only thing I would say to counter that is a cyclist. If somebody driving a car, you know, for whatever reason, lost control, and you're riding your bike and you see it happening, you can bail out of the bike and maybe the bike gets run over. But in a golf cart, you're stuck, and there's nowhere. You can't pull off the road.
Actually, you're not going to bail out of a bike, because bikes, when you put your feet into the stirrups, you're going to like your feet in.
If that's the kind of bike you're riding. But in a golf cart, I mean, you are, I mean, there's no place to pull off, really.
You do have a seatbelt on, and it's a shoulder harness.
If I could, kind of, we started this discussion a while back to find a way to open up the city. I mean, that was one of the first things, is to open up the city so neighborhoods could have access. You know, so the reality, the biggest way to open up the city is Highland Village Road, notwithstanding your neighborhood, which is still, we're going to build a bridge for you. But let's say we would get 90% there. And Highland Village Road, there's two ways to do it, match state law at 35, or do what a lot of citizens want, is drop it to 30. So those are two ways to solve that piece of it. Then the second piece is to really open up the city and open up the wide trails. And what I saw in the Peachtree thing is the wide trails is also very viable with education. Because, I mean, our wide trails could really, really benefit. You know, and I see people on Highland Village Road using it to get out of the neighborhood to something. Like, if I wanted to come in my neighborhood and I wanted to go to the wide trail, I need to go 200 yards. That's it. Then I'm off the road. And I think that's pretty much would be the whole case up and down Highland Village Road. So really, it's two questions. You know, how do you, how do you open it up with Highland Village Road? Speed limit 30 or state law 35, notwithstanding, by the way, if a bike's hit, he's usually hit from behind. He's not going to see them coming. And then the joggers, who jog wherever they want to jog. And then the second question is, what do we do with the wide trails? Because, I mean, I think that would be a, that'd be a home run. Because right now, we've got electric bikes out there. We've got electric scooters that go, they go pretty quick. So anyway, I just kind of focus on...
And I think you could limit, I mean, you can put, I've seen cities that allow golf carts on the wide trails, and you put a sign on a smaller trail that say, "No golf carts or golf carts allowed", and you designate it to people. I mean, how many people in our city own golf carts?
I think it's because they're limited right now.
30-something in it?
Right. It's a chicken and egg.
30-something.
That are registered.
That are registered.
We don't know how many aren't registered.
Wait, how many are registered?
Wait, how many are registered? But I'm listening to some of this stuff that I, I just have to, if you don't mind, Paul, jump in, because we've had this discussion already. But let's address the bikes on the roadways first. We don't have, I think I have one documented accident with a bicycle on Highland Village Road in its history. Okay, so bicyclists get it, and they do have escape routes, like Scott said. And they just created a new bike, or I'm sorry, a sidewalk for the bicyclists, more than likely, who will probably use the sidewalks in the future. The motorcycles, our motor vehicles, which are licensed by the state across the country, they drive the spade limit. We don't have a single accident on Highland Village Road with a motorcycle, to my knowledge, ever, other than up at Browning at that intersection.
Have you had a golf cart accident?
We're not, they're not allowed on that road, so I have to counter that with that. Just as the mayor said, counter, we don't allow them on the roads. But if you listen to the Peachtree presentation, I think we're perplexed here, all of us. The mayor there made specific notice, took three different instances to say they did not want their carts on the roadways. They specifically addressed it to move them to the trails, not both. So we are dealing with really a bigger issue than...
That tells me the state hasn't come in, and we have a state law that allows golf carts on roadways in master-planned communities, right?
Which Kevin, yeah, Kevin was our definition tiebreaker on the definition for master-planned communities and how we moved into that realm.
Tells me that in Georgia, they're kind of leaving that to the individual cities to regulate.
Correct. And ours was based on, I do want to remind the council, if you weren't on council, we were tasked as a staff to draft that ordinance with safety as being paramount for our residents and not the ease or the easability of commuting to this place or that place. It was first and foremost, think about the safety of everybody involved and not the convenience. So again, if you've watched the Peachtree, I just need to remind you, it was this or that. And if you had to get on the roadways, it was a limited access. So I know as a staff, we've discussed certain sections of the city that says, "It may not be convenient for you to go around, but with the right influence, the right planning, there definitely could be some sections that were more accessible or allowed or designed that, once you moved through a neighborhood and came out, that you could cross or get onto the section of Highland Village Road, or wherever they're not allowed, to move to the trail system, if that's where you guys want to go." But as your police chief, I can only, you know, I'm going to speak and say, from a safety standpoint, putting golf carts on Highland Village Road at any speed is going to be dangerous in some capacity. And again, for what reason? Convenience? To get where, if we can move them somewhere else? I took a few other notes along that process, but...
Well, chief, where else would you move them? Because I think what John is saying, and I've been through John's neighborhood, I mean, if somebody in John's neighborhood has a golf cart, they can't go anywhere.
Well, as I said, Tom, creating a corridor, so to speak, a safe corridor that allows the carts for a certain section, because if you open up that whole road from Highland Village Road, either lowering the speed limit for golf carts or raising it, allowing them on there, technically, somebody could get on at 407 with a golf cart, or a bunch of them could get on there at one point in time and drive from 407 all the way up to the highway, which Scott, you know, pointed out. You know, somebody in the forethought process of building our city out and being, moving in that direction worked very hard to get that open connection to 35 at the end of Highland Village Road. So the traffic summaries that you've seen already, they're going to increase, just like all of the traffic summaries you've seen up on 407 and 2499. There's more cars that are coming through there. So do you want to take that venue away and put some slower obstacles on there?
You know what? I do agree with you. I will state, accidentally, totally accidentally, I had to get my golf cart out on Highland Village Road, and I was scared to death. I would not recommend opening the whole Highland Village Road up from 407 all the way to 35. But I like your idea about designating a certain corridor, maybe where you can cross over and go for a certain distance, and then you have to get off if it's a connection to a wider trail. Because we do have wider trails in our city that, I will say also, accidentally, accidentally, of course, I have taken my golf cart on the wide trail accidentally that's between my neighborhood and the Walmart.
I think the chief's going to accidentally write you a ticket.
Although there's already signs posted, "No golf carts."
I didn't see those when I was on there. I mean, I tell you, I was, I turned the wrong way, and there I was. But my point is, I think if you designate certain spots where you can cross, where you can make connections, and then you open up those wider trails, I think that solves the problem.
It's a suggestion that I just, you know, sat back and thought, wanted to address, to say, that, you know, this city has been amazing in trying to find ways to accommodate just about everybody's needs and desires. And, you know, almost at a certain point, I just want to throw it out to say, there may be a time when we just can't do that for different reasons. You are the responsible law-making body for those decisions. And we enforce what you tell us to or what you don't tell us to in this particular instance. So from a police, policing standpoint, park standpoint, okay, is, if we start opening everything up and creating those unique rules also, there's enforcement, I don't want to say an issue, but enforcement becomes more problematic also. So I am really, yes, trying to struggle with creating that compromise that's A, primarily safe for the city and meets the demands of people who want to be able to get to other places.
I agree. Okay.
John?
Yes. All right. So wide trails. I'm assuming eight foot?
No.
Ten foot?
These are, this one is at least 10 foot that I've...
They range from eight to 12 feet, depending on where you are in the city. And if, you know, if I can just dovetail off of...
Just real quick.
Yep.
So one concern that I have is, I would consider the trails going through Rolling Hills Estates wide trails. The problem that we have is that every single trail going through Rolling Hills Estates is flanked by a fence, because they snake behind the houses. We have four or five very sharp turns, meaning that somebody's going to be flying through there on a golf cart, and they're going to hit somebody, I guarantee it. And kids like to drive through there on their scooters, and I guarantee they will, because, I mean, you can't see anything, right? So it's a perfect area for kids, nonlicensed, so on and so forth, to take their golf carts. They're hidden from the street. They're hidden from view.
Well, one thing you do there is, the thing that I disagreed with in Peachtree is that you don't allow a kid that's 16 years old to drive a golf cart.
Okay. But that's the whole thing about Rolling Hills Estates, is you're not going to see it. You're not going to know who is and who isn't.
Police cars aren't patrolling through the, through there.
Right. So you, I think what you do, the solution to that, is that you do a study or an analysis of safe and non-safe areas. So there's an area that's extremely safe, contrary to that, that goes behind McCullough.
Oh, yeah.
Extremely wide trail that goes from the park system. You designate certain trails that have accessibility that are not streaming through neighborhoods. Like the trail, I'm just going to use the trail behind, between Briar Hill and Walmart. It doesn't stream through the neighborhood. It's on the back side. It's flanked by Walmart, and it's flanked by, you know, or the Kristen McCullough Trail. It's wide open, but maybe a trail like yours, where it has several sharp turns like that, you say, "No, you can't use that." So you designate certain trails.
How do you enforce it, though? That's a problem. You can say no all you want. I've seen people actually go out there and take the yellow steel barricades, because they're not locked down, pick them up, so they can take their golf cart, and then they put them back in, and then they go.
In your neighborhood. There's criminals in your neighborhood.
Criminals all over.
They're all over.
Well, but I would also say that they're, I will also say, and I'm sounding like Fred Bushy. I've been, and I respect the heck out of Fred, but I've been accidentally on my trail in the back, and I see people letting their dogs poop. their dogs peep on the trail. A lot of accidents. Yes!
Is that a wide trail? I mean, if it's got a pylon in the middle, it's a wide trail.
It's a wide trail, right. And Tom, also, I wanted to work in earlier, but you brought it up, I just would throw this at the group also. This is a discussion, it's a workshop, it's brainstorming, which, again, as I said, the staff has always, in the past, worked towards finding ways to make things happen. We're moving in that direction, it says, "We just can't do it here in this particular instance." We're running all of these town meetings right now with the planning and comprehensive plan, you've got all these people coming in. I don't, I would just ask you to consider to poll the people on the trails right now who are using those trails on a regular basis, what their thoughts and ideas would be about golf carts on those trails. Because I have, I, as the police chief, have listened to many complaints, just from bicyclists, okay, and the scooters who wreak havoc out there with the people who are trying to walk and whatnot.
Well, then, maybe, maybe, maybe before, chief, maybe before you permit a golf cart, okay? You have, you require that, because right now, you only have 30. I'm going to tell you, if you open it up, you're not going to have 1,000 golf carts. A golf cart, a good golf cart, is going to cost somebody anywhere between $10,000 to $20,000. And you have, and people aren't going to go out and just buy a cheap, old, nasty golf cart, at least the ones that I've seen. I don't see any just like that you see at the golf course. But maybe you have a safety class that they're required to take, and whoever's going to drive said golf cart has to go to that safety class, has to be certified coming out of that safety class, and has to have some proof on them at all times that they've taken that safety class. Now, is that going to change stupidity? No. But all you can do, you can't, even people that are driving cars, I would disagree with the study that said that the average speed is 35 to 37 miles an hour on Highland Village Road. I drove up here tonight, and I was doing 35 miles an hour, and I had people that were on my butt doing way faster than 35 miles an hour. So I can tell you, in all of our neighborhoods, we have people that posted speed as 30 miles an hour, I'm sorry, they're doing faster than that. We have cyclists that get on the roads, and they see cars behind them, and they make no effort to move. And so now you have the cyclist on Highland Village Road, and you have people that want to pass them? That is extremely dangerous. And we've been lucky that we haven't had any car accidents. You're not going to be able to prevent forest fires. You're just not. But you do everything possible that you can, and you have to understand that you're not going to have 11,000 golf carts here. But you've got to make it more accessible to people who want to have one to move around the city. Our people will do it illegally.
To the future, okay? And you might not have 11,000 today or next month, but there's 17,500. And if you encourage and move in that direction to allow them everywhere, I think the idea is that I want to have a golf cart.
But you don't encourage. That's my thing. You say, "We're opening up certain trails, certain access, we're limiting you out of certain trails," like Sean says, and then, by golly, you do have some type of enforcement. Some type, whatever it is, whatever level it is, you do have some enforcement. You put a car there once every couple of weeks to make people think, "Hey, look, we're going to be here seeing it."
Oh, I think we have, we would definitely, without doubt, be able to have a plan or long training, education, and enforcement when it came to moving in that direction. But again, the direction is, which direction are we going? Everything, that's my question as a police chief. Everything, trails, combination, best plan attacks, limited, I mean, with a lot of thought process in the golf carts themselves, Peachtree limits their speed limits to 20...
Ours are too.
Golf carts are already limited to 19.
Right, they're supposed to.
So you can trick them up, but I'm just saying.
But again, yeah, right, with that theory, and some inspection process, some registration process, there's, our ordinance could be tweaked right now, I know that. But we're not moving in that direction till we decide or we get the clear direction.
I think what you do, chief, what my recommendation would be, because I do, I do follow the rules, and literally...
Except for when you have accidents.
Accidentally, accidentally, and it was, it's late at night, it was. It's going, I won't even explain, I was, you know. But the point is, is that you look strategically at where the, how you get around the city on the wide trails, maybe a little bit of access to Highland Village Road, and there is a way that you can figure out how to access. I bet you, if you charged me with the responsibility of saying, "Find me a way to get from one end to the other safely on various trails, and these are the trails you can use," I bet you I could find a way to do it.
So I say, "Not my project, okay? I'm just giving some input to council for future consideration."
I'm going to throw a little bit in. If the wide trails were open, okay, and I've been a golfer my whole life, you know, people share, they know how to share on a golf cart on a path. If the wide trails were open, you could get almost anywhere in the city with once in a while crossing Highland Village Road. I mean, for me, I could open up my side gate, and I'm on a wide trail. I can get anywhere in the city. So there's ways to solve it if we open up the wide trails, which already have speed. As far as people polling on the trails, I mean, I live on the trail, lived there 10 years. It's a busy trail, but it is not a busy trail.
No.
And I think it's one of the busiest trails in the city, okay? So I don't think there would be congestion on those trails. So if you open that up, and then to your point, limited access to get to them?
I think about, I think about, with respect to your neighborhood, I think about this area right here, if we could, if there was a way to connect where it comes up through, you know, under the power lines, and then makes the turn here, if there was a way to have, you know, another turn to the left that connected to Whittier. Because when I drive through, this intersection right here of trail, to me, is the most, that's where I see the most trail traffic in the city.
Coming, yeah, right.
Is right around in here, you know, this light.
Because it's the one light in the city.
Well, not only that, but I mean, you know, there's, all of Highland Shore's runners run that path. All the east side runners come up Brazos. So there's a lot of trail congestion, trail users that come right through here. So that's, that's my one concern, is if we could get, you know, if golf cart, if we had golf cart users in your neighborhood, or Catsby, for example, or somewhere like that, if we could create some sort of a way where they could cross over, and, you know, like Tom is saying, we could limit the access to Highland Village Road, that's one thing. I don't, I don't want Highland Village Road to be 100% open to golf carts. To me, that's a recipe for disaster.
I agree.
But, but I, yeah.
I only had one feedback on Highland Village Road, and it was, "I don't want to drive behind a golf cart, because I got to get to where I'm going." Put them on the trail. That was the specific feedback.
And you could, and you could get, I agree with John. Not that I've been on all the trails or accidentally, but I agree with John. If you open up, and I, and I understand your concern, and I'm not saying opening up your trail, but if you opened up the wide trails and did a study how you could open up the wide trails enough where you could get around the city, then that solves your problem. But I would also agree with Dan. Literally, the one time I was on HV Road, I was scared to death. And I said, "I got to get off, what am I doing here? I got to get off this as quickly as I can." The other thing, though, notwithstanding golf carts, I firmly support lowering that speed limit to 30 miles an hour. Thoroughly.
So before we get too far, I've got a couple of thoughts for consideration to council. One of the things that is so attractive to people that live in Highland Village and that want to move to Highland Village is the trail network. It has connectivity, like you pointed out, to probably 85 to 90% of the, of the city. And we're hoping to make that business connection in the future. We've worked really, really hard through the comprehensive plan to try to make that happen. So that becomes a culture change for folks that use it. So one thing that I would suggest that council consider is holding a town meeting and asking users to attend, folks to attend, maybe at the elementaries, three elementaries and the junior high.
I disagree.
Okay.
That's why.
Just a consideration.
But Phil finished.
Okay.
Yeah. And what I see in the activity is, I see a lot of grandparents and parents, the majority of the users of golf carts, that want to take their kids to school or their grandchildren to school. And that's where I see the activity. And this is going to, you know, impact the morning runners, the cross-country team, things like that. And if we, if we do that and get out there in front of it and ask the community what this looks like, and then what opportunities for trail usage, you know, is there, is there, are we for it, are we against it? Take all that information and then come up with a plan that makes sense. Do we open the trails for certain hours? Do we limit them? Do we have relationships with Marcus cross-country so that they understand what the trail uses looks like? Do we send this information out to the community? The other thing is, is that perception is everything. Even though we may open, you know, if that's the direction that council wants us to do, these wide trails, a lot of the trail network out there, sidewalk network, is in private areas and communities. So we, we need to be very deliberate and intentional about what that message is coming from council. In other words, this is the plan, this is a process, and this is all the work that we've done up to this, to make sure that we've engaged the community so that we have a positive impact.
Well, let me ask this. I wasn't on council when golf carts came up. Was there opposition from the community?
Some.
Some.
Yeah. Some, and you know, and the thing, as you were talking, Phil, the thing that crossed my mind, too, is, you know, when we created this ordinance, I don't remember what the impetus was to do, to put the ordinance together, other than the fact that the law had changed. But it's not like, you know, the seats were full of people who were chomping at the bit to go buy a golf cart once we created the ordinance. And here today, what, four years later, I think is what, five years later?
Roughly, yes.
30-something golf carts? I wonder, quite honestly, there's a part of me, and I'm really split on this issue, I really am, there's a part of me that wonders if we're, we're trying to find a solution for a problem that doesn't exist.
One of the things, if I just looked on their website, Peachtree City has 100 miles of golf court trails. You know where they're connected to those 100 miles of trails? Five golf courses, okay? So obviously, they have a need for that.
Well, and they said in the video, that's where all this originated, was people coming home from the golf course.
And, you know, we're building a need for something we really don't necessarily have a need for, and I know folks like golf carts, some folks have them, there's not a golf course. And I'm curious to know, in Texas in general, if there's not a golf course in the community, who's messing with this at this point? And I'm not saying, I'm not saying no and not to do it, I'm just throwing that out there.
They do exist in other, in other cities and subdivisions.
That don't have courses nearby?
Sure, yeah. I mean, I've, I've seen them in other, other communities where there's not a golf course.
Nacogdoches, Texas, and how their golf courses way outside of Nacogdoches, but man, they have them all over the place. And I don't know that it's whether or not we have a need, because I would agree with Dan, there's not going to be, in the five years that this has been in our ordinance, have we had a rash of people come in and say, "Hey, we want more access for golf carts"? No.
I think we had a run early on of, you know, almost 20 in the first year or so that registered, and then since then, it's just been a few here and there that's gotten us the number we're at today, right, chief?
What is the real number? That number seems, I'd heard 100.
I think it's 30-something, isn't it?
One of the presentations that I wasn't here for...
I keep thinking the number 36.
37 is really where I think my name is stuck at. 62 would probably be the highest, but there were probably about three people very active who wanted the carts initially. It might have changed to five.
Oh, there was, I remember when we were talking about this, there was, there was conversation that, "Oh, my gosh, if you pass this ordinance, we won't have cars picking people up at McCullough and Briar Hill, they'll be coming in their golf cart." And it just, it hasn't materialized.
It hasn't materialized, and I don't think it will. I really don't. The only reason...
Well, I think he's saying then, I think Mr. Lombardo's saying, "If it's not an issue, then why make it an issue until it's brought forth?"
Well, you don't make it an issue, but at least you open up some areas for people to have more access. You're not, it's not like you're rewriting the Ten Commandments. You're making it more accessible. You don't have to go out and put billboards, "Hey, everybody..."
So can I ask a question? I mean, again, trying to, trying to keep the split, the distinction between the trail systems or the roadways. And I haven't looked at all of the situations, but if, if the roadway since the city put, I mean, we spent four or five months, Kevin, putting that thing together, many, many workshops and behind the scenes for that. If there was a way to connect or allow you to get to the other roadways in the city, do you necessarily need to get onto the trails anymore?
Yes.
Trails, to me, is the simplest thing.
Me too.
But access, and again, my neighborhood isn't the only one. You can't go anywhere without getting on Highland Village Road, okay?
Trails, I would just, again, throw that out, just if you ever ask.
The wide trails are fun to ride on. They're fun to ride on because you can take your granddaughter, who wants to go hunting fairies, or you can go say, "Hey, let's go look at the, let's go down here to the woods." And you can take your golf cart accidentally, of course, and go down a wide trail, and you're doing all those fun things. The only reason we bought our cart was because our kids live at the top of the hill, and we knew it would be fun for my granddaughter and grandson, who's only 16 months old. But my granddaughter loves it, and that's the majority. If you see people driving golf carts, they've got either their kids or their grandkids on it. You're not going to have a rash of people that go out and buy a golf cart for Dan Jaworski's son to drive back and forth to high school in. You're just not. But opening up the certain trails to give people a little bit more access and freedom is not going to hurt you. It's not going to hurt you, I'm sorry.
You have thoughts?
I have a lot of thoughts, but...
You've been quiet, nodding your head and shaking.
I know, I know, I know. Let's see, I would, I would agree with Mr. Lombardo. I don't know, for 36 golf carts, first question I have is, where are these golf carts going, right? Peachtree, you can go to McDonald's, right?
Yeah, we don't do that.
In Highland Village, maybe McCullough, maybe Briar Hill would be desirable, maybe Marcus, if you're that kind of kid, I don't know. But nobody's going to Walmart in their golf cart, are they? Can you park a golf cart at Walmart?
Yes.
Can you?
Yes, I've parked at Walmart.
Without a license?
Legally.
Yes.
No, you can't.
Legally, no.
No.
Legally, no.
They can't get there legally.
Can you get to...
Can you park anywhere?
Yeah, the district, the Bowery, yeah, you can get there and you can park it in a regular parking, there aren't golf cart parking spots, but you can take up a parking spot. I've seen people come get donuts there in their golf cart.
You're telling me that when I've gone to Walmart and I park in a parking spot, I'm parking illegally?
How did you, I'll ask, how did you get there, Tom?
I took a, went up the Briar Hill to a very wide sidewalk cut across.
To a trail, which is not legal in the city.
Well, it didn't say it wasn't legal, that...
We, oh, there's signs.
Not on the side, not on those big wide sidewalks, huh?
I don't like the idea of opening up all the trails of golf carts.
I agree.
I just simply don't, right?
I agree.
There's bad enough with bikes and scooters and those little one-wheel things, and I don't have a golf cart, so I'm a little bit selfish here. I encourage people to walk, right? You don't need a golf cart. But I understand it's fun to ride with hunt fairies. But I think this is a lot to do for 36, 36 golf carts. Maybe it goes to 100. In the future, if we expand the trails master plan, and we can put more time into this, but I don't think it needs to be solved right now. I just, you put the infrastructure in for place so that someplace down in the future, you can make those connections a little bit easier by expanding the trail network through the master plan. You know, I don't, unless you want to have the main arterial down the, you know, the transmission, transmission line and make two parallel trails, one for a cart, one for a bike, but just so you get across the city, but, I don't know. I just don't see, like, the point is, nobody's here clamoring for, you know, all this access around the city. You're not going anywhere except up the street for a joyride, so you're going to do that anyways.
I would, I would totally, I would totally agree.
You know.
But I don't think it's, I don't think it's rocket science, and I think John would possibly agree. It's not rocket science to say, we're going to designate these five trails that connect people to get across the city. It's not, it's not like you got to do, spend $50,000 on an engineering study and bring a team in here and look at it, it's like, okay, we look at a map, here are these five trails that you can use to get from point A to point Z, and boom, it's simple.
So, the people that will follow the rules will follow the rules, no matter whatever rules you put there.
That's correct.
People that are going to do stuff by accident are not going to care if you designate only five trails. They're going to do what they want to do. We can't get citizens to pick up their dog poop.
That's right.
Right? How are we going to limit people from driving on other paths if you let them drive on five?
When we wrote the ordinance, we said you can't operate a golf cart if you don't have a driver's license, yet there are kids that are 12, 14 years old, driving golf carts.
That's where the enforcement--
And that, and that was where I was going.
But you're going to pull over a golf cart--
But we haven't had complaints, have we?
Yes. We've got eight minutes left. Let me see if I can summarize this and pull it together so you guys have the guidance you need. The simple, the simple thing, I think--
We don't have any guidance.
The simple, well, that's what we're here, that's what we're trying to give them. The simple question is about the speed limit, and I think there is a bit of a consensus to lower the speed limit on Highland Village Road. Would that be a safe assumption?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there's answer to question number one.
Way too fast to begin with.
In terms of the golf carts and the trails, I, I think the way we, we can't, we're not going to solve it tonight, we're not going to solve it next month, and we're not going to solve it in the next six months. I think what we need to do is continue to study it, look at, you know, maybe put this as a part of the, the master plan, the trails master plan, to see, to see what we, what we can do. But I don't, I, I'm, I don't think we can responsibly, you know, say, yeah, let's open this up or, or not. Now, in terms of the, the other issue with lowering the speed limit, it's going to make Highland Village Road open to golf carts all of a sudden.
I didn't open it up to check if we listed the streets that they, you're not allowed on, but I think we listed Highland Village Road.
We did. But it was because the speed limit was 35 miles an hour.
So, how do you, do you want the ordinance still address that at this time, no carts are allowed on that road? Because the ordinance--
Well, I guess that's the legal question is, is even if we do lower the speed limit to 30 miles an hour, can we still, by way of ordinance, designate Highland Village Road as a golf cart free road? As a public safety issue?
Yes.
We can.
Yes. We can still prohibit. We'd be stricter than state law, just not more--
What does everybody think, what do y'all think about? Because that compounds the problem that you've been wanting to solve in a way.
I'll be a nay vote. Okay. I don't mind 30, as long as there can be access. If it's 30 with no access, leave it 35. So, I mean, that's just one, one council, one vote out of seven, so.
And it's just a workshop tonight.
No, I know, it's a workshop, I'm just telling you my position on it. I don't want to change it just to change it.
So, I mean, I know there's folks that say that they have a real issue with the speed, and there's certain areas where the bend is and the curve and what have you. I don't know, I don't necessarily want to lower the speed limit for the entire stretch just because, I mean, there's not, as the chief has shown us numerous occasions, there's not a safety issue with the speed limit, and I think Scott has done the same thing with his traffic studies. So, I don't know, if, if we're not opening up to the, you know, for, for accessibility for the carts, I don't see a reason to mess with it. I mean, if we want to examine the curve, I, you know, I'm okay with that, because I know there's been some issues down at the big curve. But other than that, it's just, you know, it's going to be an arterial even more used because of the, the access to the freeway going northbound. I, I just don't see a need to bog that down.
Bog it down by slowing the speed down, or?
Yes, by slowing the speed down.
Okay. So, we're still pretty split on that?
I could go either way.
Okay.
I agree with John, if you're not going to lower it, if you're not going to lower it to let the golf carts on, then I'm, I'm okay leaving.
Okay.
Let's, let's table.
Yeah.
Mayor, one thing I quickly I might mention, and, and you touched upon it, as did Councilman Feaster, with the Trail Master Plan, and if you remember the first discussion we had about this, Ron Stewart showed us the different areas along Highland Village Road where you cannot get out. Thinking long-term, there are ways to do some wide sidewalks there where somebody could take a golf cart on the sidewalk, get over to Selmair, get over behind Doubletree Ranch Park, so those are definitely long-term.
I suggested--
But there's certainly options--
I suggested earlier today that we take a look at Penjy as, as a, as a potential place to--
That could be one as well, yeah, sure could.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you all for the input.
Thank you.
Not done yet.
Did anybody have any questions or need to clarify anything on, on, on tonight's agenda?
No.
Nope. All right, then. That being the case, early work session is adjourned at 6:56.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have one thing to say. I'd like to commend our firefighters. I had the opportunity to ride last night on the Santa Fire truck. Those guys, Chief, did a tremendous job, and they really get into it, they take their time going up and down the streets, very safe. I also commend all the citizens of our fine town, our fine city that came out and waved to Santa. And I tell you what, your, your guys, our citizens take good care of them. I can't tell you how many boxes of cookies and candies, and I mean, by the time we finished, there were stacks of stuff, and I said, uh-huh, I know why you guys do this. But, but they did a very nice job, so I commend them.
Next, I think, Chief, you have swearing in to do.
We do. Uniquely, I have three new officers here, but we're going to save one for next month. He's currently working in our dispatch center, getting certified, and, and I will formally recognize him next month, but it's neat to have Arturo Flores here also. He's, he's in civilian clothes purposely. But the other two, I want to, you know, talk about them and talk about quickly the, the uniqueness in policing over the last few years. No surprise, policing recruitment and retention is very difficult for all departments across the nation, even ours. And fire departments struggling right now, too. Police department got to have it, I'm putting this out there so you understand, probably eight years ago, 10 years ago, departments before then, kids used to pay for their own ways to go through those academies. So, they'd survive, live however they could to make ends meet and get through those academies. And then police departments realizing that recruitment was declining, brought people on board, hired you, took a hu, I mean, is a, they'd go off, back then it was three months, we're up to five, almost six months that they'd go to an academy, and before we get them back. And there are numerous tests. I can tell you that the, the days of policing back 35 years about there when I first started have changed tremendously. The testing processes, the learning curves, the, the, all of the things that those kids have to go through is amazing. So, when we bring someone up here who's been through those academies, I just want you to understand and appreciate-- I think I remember somebody from the Salvation Army telling us a couple of years ago, 20 bucks makes well over 100 meals, is what the Salvation Army can do with that money. So if you can, please do. And the Stuff the Cruiser campaign was a fantastic success. I'm sure the chief is going to talk about it here in a minute, how many toys that they got and the gift cards and the cash. So I just want to say thank you to such a wonderful community for having such giving hearts. Chief, you want to follow up?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. I think it was our biggest year ever. You've graciously allowed us to take over the training room, the pre-council workshop room for our toy drive. We emptied it three times this year.
Wow.
In addition, we did a joint toy drive, first responder for Denton County toy drive with Five Star Ford. That night alone was probably about $8,500 worth of stuff that also went to, that one went to LISD Angel Tree specifically. Our major groups this year, our goal is always to keep these things in Denton County, and I think we hit at least $50,000 in toys and cash donations. Cash donations, more than $8,500 this year. It was absolutely amazing for the tough times that we're in, but people really dug in and did some amazing things. So we still have a little bit left. Our primary recipient was LISD Angel Tree, which is an amazing program to be part of and watch the student council government be involved in that process and how well organized they are. If I could ever get any of you there next year, I didn't even understand the magnitude of it till I walked around this year and saw them in action. It was really, really amazing, our future leaders of our world being part of that giving process. And then the Single Parent Avisy Group is our next biggest group, and then Single Moms Group. There's a bunch of groups that we try to fill their needs for this. So a little bit left over. If that message is out there for anybody, you can reach me or Corporal Harney, and we'll try to fill those needs also. But again, thank you for the city, for the support for that, the staff behind the scenes, Harney, the auxiliaries, the officers who've gone out there and volunteered on their own time. If you saw anybody out there, they were on their own time. Their own time came in, they were getting paid to do that. They were here to do it out of the goodness and kindness of their heart for the community. So, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have one thing to say. I'd like to commend our firefighters. I had the opportunity to ride last night on the Santa fire truck. Those guys, chief, did a tremendous job, and they really get into it. They take their time going up and down the streets, very safe. I also commend all the citizens of our fine town, our fine city that came out and waved to Santa. And I tell you what, your guys, our citizens take good care of them. I can't tell you how many boxes of cookies and candies, and I mean, by the time we finished, there were stacks of stuff, and I said, "Uh huh, I know why you guys do this." But they did a very nice job, so I commend them.
Okay, next, I think, chief, you have swearing in to do.
We do. Uniquely, I have three new officers here, but we're going to save one for next month. He's currently working in our dispatch center, getting certified, and I will formally recognize him next month, but it's neat to have Arturo Flores here also. He's in civilian clothes purposely. But the other two, I want to talk about them and talk about quickly the uniqueness in policing over the last few years. No surprise, policing recruitment and retention is very difficult for all departments across the nation, even ours. And fire departments struggling right now, too. Police Department got to have it, and putting this out there so you understand, probably eight years ago, 10 years ago, departments before then, kids used to pay for their own ways to go through those academies. So they'd survive, live however they could to make ends meet and get through those academies. And then police departments realizing that recruitment was declining, brought people on board, hired you, took a hu, I mean, they'd go off, back then it was three months, we're up to five, almost six months that they'd go to an academy and before we get them back. And there are numerous tests. I can tell you that the days of policing back 35 years about there when I first started have changed tremendously. The testing processes, the learning curves, all of the things that those kids have to go through is amazing. So when we bring someone up here who's been through those academies, I just want you to understand, appreciate the amount of effort, the amount of time away from their families, away from everything they did to become a police officer, and more importantly, be part of our community. So with that being said, two tonight, I get the pleasure of swearing in. First one, I'm going to go in order, is Joseph Montez. Come on up, Joseph.
I'm going to swear in first. It's been a while since I've done this, so I'm going to...
Good luck.
I, Joseph Montez.
I, Joseph Montez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Police officer.
Police officer.
City of Highland Village.
City of Highland Village.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And I will to the best of my ability.
And I will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
The laws of Texas.
The laws of Texas.
The ordinances of Highland Village.
The ordinances of Highland Village.
And the policies and philosophies of the Highland Village Police Department.
And the...
Policies.
And philosophies.
And philosophies.
Of the Highland Village Police Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Hopefully, in your career, you only have to go through one of these. There's a few of us who've done different ones for different reasons. But with that being said, being pinned on is a pretty significant thing, so I always give the opportunity to our newest officers to invite one of their favorites, hopefully, their most favorite, up to do that. So, Joseph, who are you inviting up?
I will be bringing on my girlfriend, Riley Deal.
It looks like they practiced this. Most often, they'll get stuck.
Good job.
Thank you. Take pictures.
Sorry, I'm not the original.
I'll take a couple of pictures. Anybody else want to get in the picture?
To tell us who everybody was.
So who came was my mother, my father, and my girlfriend, of course, and my father's new fiance.
Awesome.
I'd like to begin just by thanking everybody here on the council member. I'd like to thank the chief of police and everybody in the Highland Village Police Department. Every day I get to put on this uniform, I'm smiling, I'm ecstatic, I'm excited just to get to work and get to serve the people and show you guys what I'm about. This has been my dream ever since I was a young boy in California. And beyond blessed just to be here and stand in front of you guys, like I said, wearing this badge and wearing this uniform. It's a great pleasure. Thank you so much.
Welcome aboard.
David Shear. Oh man, I might need a little water after that one.
Almost threw it on the air. Let's see if we can do this one. Hi, David Shear.
Hi, David Shear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Officer.
Officer. Police officer. Police officer.
City of Highland Village.
The City of Highland Village.
State of Texas.
The State of Texas.
And I will to the best of my ability.
And I will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
The laws of Texas.
The laws of Texas.
Ordinances of Highland Village.
The ordinances of Highland Village.
And the policies and philosophies of the Highland Village Police Department.
And the policies and philosophies of the Highland Village Police Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Awesome. And who will you call up?
I'm calling up my father, Scott Shear.
Uh oh.
Background on this, too, these are new residents to Highland Village, so it's all cool.
Transplants from New York.
Stick him, stick him.
He does not have his vest on, so I will get off. There you go. Take pictures. Yankees or Mets?
Yankees.
Oh.
I just wanted to thank you all as well. It is an honor to serve this community as a police officer, but like chief said, me and my family did just move here, so I feel just as lucky to be a resident of the community as well. So it's really a blessing that I get to both serve the community and be a part of it at the same time. So thank you all. Everyone here has been so welcoming and kind since we've got here, so it just makes me that much more excited to help out in both as an employee, an police officer, and as a resident.
As a resident to you and your family, welcome to Highland Village, and as a member of our team, welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
John's just...
Thank you for allowing us to do that always. It's really, really a neat thing. Thank you.
All right, now it's my turn. Mr. Glenn Bonds and Mr. Jim Verfith.
So, Mayor, if I could speak just a little bit about this project, I think I'd like to provide some background. When I first started here about five years ago, I was given a list by Ken and the former city manager of things that needed to get done, and we got those things done. But one of the things that was lying there in the background was this idea of heating and air conditioning in the barn. And we had brought it up to discussion for council, and it's just one of those things that, well, it would be nice to have, but man, we were so limited on funds that it just wasn't one of those things that just made it to the top. But it kept coming up every year. And then how we got to where we are today with having heating and air conditioning in the barn was through an event that the police department had. And I think it was, what was it, an officers' ball? Chief, come up here and tell us about it.
It was our annual awards banquet, actually, and in tradition, we try to always keep our funds localized to local establishments. So I happen to know a man here who caters, I think we did from Verf's that night, from Shoal Creek, actually, but he's part of those, both. And during that night of discussion, since it was the first 90-ish... It was really hot, okay. I was trying to remember how hot it was, but it was sweaty hot.
Yes.
And I know he's told the story a couple of different times, but the only air conditioning in that building was in the back room where he had the food set up, and it was still just as hot back there at that point in time. And Jim's a great supporter of police and fire, and he just could not understand why we were in that building and what he could do or what he could find to do for it. And he happens to know an amazing HVAC guy, Glenn Bonds, and I think they both arm wrestled for a discussion over how it was going to come to fruition and over a couple beverages, I'm sure, here and there at one of those establishments, it was decided to move in that direction, but also to carry it over the top with a presentation in Sergeant Dennis Oliver's name to try to recognize everything at one point in time. So it was a lot of moving parts. I fast-tracked through that, you've heard some of those things at the other presentations. I'm not trying to detract from that anyway, but the real purpose of tonight is to recognize these two behind the scenes, who made it happen. So thank you.
It was a great project when chief came to me and said, "Phil, it is really hot in that barn and trying to hold an event that time of the year." And that barn traditionally during the summer months is not rentable, and it is a fantastic space that stays full during the cooler times of the year, which is the fall and the spring. So being able to have this HVAC system added to the barn has been tremendous, and we're expecting just better service to the residents and those that come into our city to experience what Highland Village is about. So it was great working with Glenn, and Jim was behind the scenes. I didn't meet him until we got to the naming projects, but I worked directly with Glenn quite a bit on this project. It was six months, there were supply delays and everything like that, but he got it done, and it works fantastic today, and we're so grateful to you on behalf of the Park Department and other police department and other departments that we use it as well. Yeah, the estimated total cost of services to get an HVAC system like that, if we were to go out to bid, would be in the upwards of $110,000 to $120,000, around in that area. So we got that system with labor, materials, all donated from Glenn and his company, so really grateful for that.
And Jim, yes, and Jim. So thank you, Jim and Glenn, both, and come on up here with the mayor.
I want to add something which actually is really amazing. The fact that there was a police officer event that I was catering, and here tonight we're swearing in two new officers. And Doug Rhine came up with this idea to dedicate the building to Dennis Oliver, who was a phenomenal personal friend over the years, way before that building was even built in my life. It's just such a phenomenal tie-in to this whole event. It's just really warming to me. It's just really neat. So this just couldn't be more perfect in the timing of how all this has happened. So for me to be catering that event, and you've all heard it already, but I'm sitting there in the air conditioning, and these police officers are being rewarded and sweating in the heat, and I'm looking at this going, "Something's wrong with this." Our, some of our best, I mean, our firefighters are also in that category, but I'm going, "Our firefighters and our town council and our mayors are sweating, and I'm the caterer, and I'm sitting in the air conditioning. There's something really wrong here." And I talked to Glenn, and I go, "Glenn, I got an idea. Why don't you and I chip in and air condition this building? Because maybe these guys can use this again going forward, and maybe the Parks Department and other people in our city could use this. This is a great building, and this just seems a shame that we can't use this building most of the year, because in Texas, it's pretty warm here. And sometimes it's actually cold, and this might be a really cool place to use."
We got heat in there, too.
And there's heat in there. So I'm just really, this night got better, that two great new officers got sworn in to protect our city. Glenn and I are both residents here, and this has got really a lot better automatically. So I'm really, 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 really happy I'm here tonight, and we're so proud to be citizens here, and I've lived here since 1995, and it's just really cool to be a part of this town. So, thank you, guys.
Without further ado, come on up. So you each get a copy of this, suitable for framing, and I'll...
How much is framing, you think?
That's not my department. But I'll read what, so everybody else can hear, I'll read what it says. It's a proclamation, "Whereas in May 2017, Doubletree Ranch Park opened for the community and featured a covered pavilion, barn for parties and events, splash pads, soccer complex, and nature trails. And whereas after five years of hosting events in the barn, it was identified as needing air conditioning and heat to better serve and provide a more enjoyable experience for patrons. And whereas after attending an event in the barn, Highland Village residents Mr. Glenn Bonds and Mr. Jim Verfith offered to donate funding, labor, equipment for installation of a heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system. And whereas, upon the request of Mr. Glenn Bonds and Mr. Jim Verfith, the Highland Village City Council formally named the Doubletree Ranch Park Barn as a Sergeant Dennis Oliver Event Center on August 9, 2022, in remembrance of Sergeant Dennis Oliver, who served for 17 years as a Highland Village police officer. And whereas, thanks to the generosity of Mr. Glenn Bonds and Mr. Jim Verfith, the Sergeant Dennis Oliver Event Center will provide an exceptional experience for the community and visiting patrons for years to come. And whereas the City of Highland Village recognizes Mr. Glenn Bonds and Mr. Jim Verfith as valued residents and partners of the city, now therefore I, Daniel Jaworski, Mayor of the City of Highland Village, do hereby proclaim this proclamation of appreciation is presented to Mr. Glenn Bonds and Mr. Jim Verfith, who have given their treasures and talents for this project that will provide a special place for all to enjoy."
Thank you so much.
Thank you for everything you both did. Thank you for being such great partners. Take some pictures. Jim, come on up here and get some good pictures that you can put in the frame of the proclamation.
We'll take a donation for it. Wait, 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 let me get right here. I'm very proud of this.
Turn it around the other way, get it upside down.
I read it upside down. I do a good AC installs all.
As the chief would say, just point and click. Thank you, thank you both. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, moving on to number eight, city manager and staff reports. Mr. Stevens, do you have anything you want to report?
Mayor, we've got a couple of things before the village report. First, I want to mention, last week, we recognized our employees who had reached a service award milestones, and that was five years and above in five-year increments. It was a combined 165 years of experience, and I want to call out a few of those in particular. One, Phil's walking out. Phil was recognized for, oh, they are, for five years of service. Two of our longest tenured employees, Autumn Ammon was recognized for 25 years, and Brendan Grove, our communication supervisor, with 30 years. So we really thank the dedication of all of those employees who hit those milestones. I also want to mention that this past weekend was the Dallas Marathon, and the Dallas Marathon brings contestants from all over the world, and it's a very, very big marathon. Highland Village was well represented. The half-marathon female winner in the age 60 to 64 category, Evelyn Natale, is from here in Highland Village, and the 19 and under female winner in the marathon, Gabrielle Gilberti, is from Highland Village as well. So I wanted to recognize both of those athletes for that achievement.
Wow, impressive. Can we have a village report?
And a village report.
Santa's tour through Highland Village is already underway, but he has a few more stops before he heads back to the North Pole. From now until Friday, check out the Santa tracker at highlandvillage.org to see when he will be riding through your neighborhood. Just listen for the fire engine and step outside to wave at Santa.
Merry Christmas.
Free Christmas tree recycling begins on December 26 and will last until January 3. Head over to Brazos Park to drop off your live tree, and please be sure to take off all your decorations. Tickets to the Father and Daughter Valentine's Dance go on sale December 26 for Highland Village residents. Tickets are only $40 per person and include dancing, dinner, door prizes, and memories that will last a lifetime. To get your tickets, visit hvparks.com. To get your tickets, visit hvparks.com.
It's 12 days till Christmas and Highland Village has for me. 12 cloths for eating, 11 gamers playing, 10 malls for whacking, nine kids escaping, eight slices steaming, seven aerial glasses, six different toppings, five books to read, four Santa candles, three pies, lattes, two ice cream cakes and a gift card to a painted Merry Christmas, y'all.
I am so glad to hear about the daddy-daughter dance, and my daughter's going to be happy to hear about that, too. So next, moving on to item number eight, visitor comments. Anyone wishing to address the city council must complete a speaker's request form and return it to the city secretary. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted in discussing or taking action on items not posted on the agenda. Action on your statement can only be taken at a future meeting. In order to expedite the flow of business and to provide all visitors the opportunity to speak, the mayor may impose a three-minute limitation on any person addressing the city council. A 30-minute time allotment is set for this section of the agenda and the remaining speakers will be heard at the end of the agenda. I think we only have one signed up, is that right? Mrs. Thigpen.
Yeah, mine was not.
Oh, you do not wish to speak, I'm sorry. You filled out a form.
You going to read it?
Yeah, you're saying, you're opposition to any apartments and opportunity zones and any change in the Highland Village Road speed limit. Take Officer, Commander Schlichter's advice, he knows best. They're entered. All right, moving on to consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and a vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda so that it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. Items on tonight's consent agenda are as follows. Number 10, consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on November 8, 2022, which seems like a long time ago. Consider Resolution 2022-3038 authorizing the city manager to enter into an interlocal cooperation agreements with Denton County for ambulance and fire protection services. Number 12, consider Resolution 2022-3039 authorizing negotiation and execution of a contract for construction services with Viking Fence Company for the Doubletree Ranch Park Splash Pad fencing and Highland Village Tennis Center fencing projects. Number 13, consider Resolution 2022-3041 authorizing negotiation and execution of a contract for construction services with Forever Law in Texas for the Doubletree Ranch Playground and Unity Park Softball Field Projects. And number 14, receive budget reports for a period ending September 30, 2022. Is there any discussion needed for any of the items on the consent agenda?
Dan, I have one item of clarification. Hey, Paul, on the interlocal agreement on page four of seven, under compensation, number two, the fixed sum of $249,749, is that a typo? Page four of seven under the interlocal agreement.
Jason, do you have a copy of that with you as well? We'll make sure that's correct.
Just clarification on what that exact amount is, please.
It said page four?
Yes, sir, four of seven. So look at the dollar amount that the county pays us, which is $7,980. So you take 7,912 plus the .09 rule miles at 6714, that gets you to 7980, right at 7980. And then I can't figure out what the number two is.
Oh, okay.
Is that 249,000? Is it 249 dollars?
That should, I would think that should only have two decimal, what's would that be?
24975 is what it should be.
Okay, all right. It's 249.
Okay, okay. So do we need to correct that?
It's just very exact.
Did that just be rounded up to 275? Or am I just impressed that I read it?
I would think it would make more sense to be 75 as opposed to...
I was just curious.
No.
Or 249, 250, I mean.
The council has to be impressed that I read that, though.
24975.
You do get points for that.
That you could read?
That I could actually read, yes.
You didn't come across that in an accident, did you?
No, I actually read the agreement.
And that may be in the form of the county has, that they've carried it out that far. But it wouldn't make a whole lot of difference in it, but we can...
Well, I just couldn't tell if that was 249,746.9. I'm going, wait a sec, we get $250,000 from the county, but no, it's 249 dollars.
It would be better, wouldn't it?
How many basis points is that?
All right, thank you, Paul.
Yeah, we can clarify that with county, make sure we have that correct.
That's fine, thank you.
Anything else from anybody else? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
And anybody with a second? I'll second. All right, Mr. Heslop seconds a motion by Mr. Kix Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries, six nothing. Moving on to action agenda, we did not meet in closed session, so there is no action to take there. So then we have item number 16, conduct a public hearing and consider ordinance 2022-1299, amending the Highland Village Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance by amending Section 39 definitions relating to the definition of coverage to exclude the surface area of pools. This is a first of two reads. Mr. Kristin.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The city has a current code which mandates maximum lot coverage in most single-family residential districts. The city's been approached by several residents in the past and currently to allow them to build certain items, accessory structures, swimming pools, so on and so forth. And when the building official does the calculation, it exceeds that 40% limit and we have to turn them down. So we have reviewed the ordinances of our neighboring cities and have determined that they all have excluded swimming pools as part of their calculation, the surface area swimming pools, water area only, where our code still has that in there as part of the impervious calculation. So the city attorney has drafted an ordinance revision to remove the surface area swimming pools out of this impervious coverage calculation. We worked this item with planning and zoning in November 15. And with a vote of five to zero, it was approved to move forward with one minor revision in the definition that says swimming pools and/or spas. And they wanted to remove the "and" and just call it swimming pools or spas. This item is an ordinance change revision. It requires a public hearing. I'll step back and let you conduct your public hearing.
All right. So we'll open the public hearing at 7:40. Anybody that would like to speak one way or the other on the issue? And we'll close the public hearing at 7:40 and a half.
Be happy to take any questions you might have or defer to the city attorney.
No, makes sense.
Mayor, I might add quickly, we do have a representative from Golkey Pools here, who we've been discussing this throughout the entire process, as well as some of the new homeowners. They've been very cooperative and I think this is really one of those opportunities where we had a correction that needed to be made that serves the citizens well. So we appreciate their patience. Unfortunately, going to P&amp;Z, two rings to council, it takes some time, but one more meeting and we'll be there, so.
Pools should be done by summer. It'll be good.
Now that the rains come.
Would anybody like to make a motion? Or go ahead.
Sorry, I have one question. So what's the material difference in changing "or" to "and"?
The way I understood the planning and zoning question was, they were thinking the spa attached to most pools was not part of the pool, I guess. Whereas we would consider that, yes, part of the pool calculation, and then a standalone spa. So they wanted to change it to "or".
So if you have a standalone spa with no pool, does that count against your coverage? Because it now says swimming pool and spa, right? There's no "or", right? So I can no longer have a standalone spa.
You can.
That's why you have the "and/or".
That's why you get the "or".
Well, it just says "and".
Aren't they changing it to "or"?
Remove the "or".
They removed the "or", which I don't think makes a lot of sense. I don't think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, and just to make this more complicated, that has to be an in-ground spa, correct? It can't be a above-ground, sitting on a pad, a concrete pad, right?
Actually, it doesn't make that distinction.
Okay, it needs to be, it needs a distinction. It has to be an in-ground because if it's sitting on a concrete pad, it's not doing, and it usually has a cover on it, I would say, as well. If it's one of those, that wouldn't be helping the runoff situation. As it's designed, the water in theory is going to go in the pool or an in-ground spa, right? If it's sitting on a pad...
I agree with Robert. I think it should go back to "or".
Well, I'm just curious. I mean, if we're swimming pools and spas, I'd be curious if I only have a pool or I only have a spa, right? Not that that's going to happen, but...
Or what if you add an in-ground spa later? So after the fact.
I don't know. I like "or". "Or" seemed clear to me. I could have either or both, or "and/or".
"And/or" covers everything.
"And/or" is what we had at the beginning. Planning and zoning asked if they just put the "and".
So would you like to make a motion and with your motion include the word "or" back in it?
Can somebody write that for me?
I think that's, I think that's the way to go. I agree. You want to handle the in-ground versus above-ground as well.
It would be a motion to approve the ordinance without the planning and zoning's tweak.
We can overrule it.
Recommendation.
With unanimous...
Recommendation, there you go. Without P&amp;Z's recommendation.
Hang on. Well, it says "or" now. Well, let me make, well, the wording as it reads now, unless I'm reading something that's different than the packet, I hope I'm not, it says water surface area of swimming pools and spas. It doesn't mean there has to be a swimming pool, I mean, it can be swimming pools and spas. It doesn't mean there has to be both in that, the way this is intended to read.
Okay. Does that address your question?
Yeah, it does. I mean, as long as we can give our residents the ability to just put an in-ground spa if they want, right? And we're not...
I mean, why don't we just...
It doesn't have to be a combination.
To me, "and/or" means you could have a pool, you could have a spa, or you could have a pool and spa attached combination. I think when you just, when you remove the "or", it just sounds like you could have a pool or you could have a spa. You originally, did you originally write the revision?
Yeah, I wrote the original draft.
And you included "and/or". And you had the "and/or", correct?
I had the "and/or" and let's put the "and/or".
I think the "and/or" needs to stay, or needs to be returned. We're giving you some extra credit here.
They're going to bill us for that now. I'm already here anyway. I'm going to make a change. And/or, yeah.
Let's make your motion.
It's 64 square feet, maybe 100 square feet, max.
That's a big spa. Holy cow.
Now, the question, the question does remain about, that was just mentioned, about whether it needs to be an in-ground, in-ground spa or it can be above-ground portable, well...
A portable, I think the portable kind of doesn't...
Because some guy, I'll just say, some owners put covers on them, some don't, and...
I get it, but that's sitting on top of concrete.
I understand. So, yeah.
And it's portable.
I think the "and/or" covers it.
Okay.
Myself, as long as staff understands that.
I understand that people will also put covers on their pools during the winter, too. But we're not, we're not going to go so far, I mean, the plan is not to go so far as to make that distinction.
Okay.
So we're not going to go out and go back and forth because somebody put a cover on their spa or on their pool.
Better hurry and make your motion. It always gets too complicated.
Any water service is going to be a calculation.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve ordinance 2022-1299 as originally drafted, including...
I'd just say "and/or".
"and/or", rather than "and" or "or".
I still have a problem with the above ground.
Motion, a second, motion by Mr. Feaster, a second by Mr. Heslop. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, item number 17, consider Resolution 2022-3040 ratifying the emergency declaration by the city manager authorizing work to be performed by White Electric relating to the repair of the municipal complex electrical system. Mr. Kristin.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. On November 13, I was notified that we had a catastrophic electrical failure at the municipal complex via explosion in the, in the main panel, electrical panel entering the building. We troubleshooted the issue and determined that there was a, some sort of a direct short. It was a little more than what the staff could handle, so we sought one of our contractors that we've used in the past to come in and help us troubleshoot. And they did determine that it was a direct short. And we immediately declared an emergency and per Texas Government Code, Section 252, and started repairs. We verified that the standby generator system that's attached to the building was operational and was operating as spec. You know, this building's 23 years old. It has never been put under the stress of that and probably will never be again. But it worked great. It powered the dispatch center, the training room, which was our old emergency operations center and at the time of the construction of the building. And also it powered the city servers. Our electrical contractor immediately started repairs and at the same time called in generator power to be hooked up on the administrative side, to get the administrative side back open. The city was shut down for two days and then everybody was let back in to have business as usual. Contractor completed his repairs in less than three weeks and co-serv power was reestablished on November 25. What we're asking tonight is to ratify the emergency declaration and authorize the city manager to sign the contract and pay the contractor. The total repair was roughly $148,000.
Any questions?
One question, insurance?
We have made an insurance claim. They have contacted us and they are going to have an engineering firm perform an investigation of the issue.
Thanks.
Anybody else? No? Anybody want to make a motion? Yeah. Make a motion that we approve item 17, Resolution 2022-3040. Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Lombardo, a second. By Mr. Nelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to late work session, does anyone have any reports or future items to discuss?
Nothing much.
Are we going to meet the December 21 deadline on the I-35 northbound access?
We can check on that. Of course, they were working really, really hard before the rain came.
I got my doubts.
Yeah, we can follow the text, dot and see where they are on schedule.
All right, with that, I'll just close by wishing everybody a very Merry Christmas and a happy and safe New Year. Thank you for everybody that came out tonight. Be safe and enjoy your time with family, friends and the holiday spirit. We're adjourned.